But more importantly, I am a commissioner for the Syracuse City Redistricting Commission, coming on the SDRC. We are here at our first hearing of this SDRC. Welcome, welcome, welcome. Before we get started, just wanted to give you a few ideas of what we're doing and why we're convening these hearings. We are convening today's hearings to gather ideas and direction from the public on how to best redraw the city's common council districts. The U.S. Constitution requires that sentences be taken once a decade and that ledges is made district lines be redrawn to reflect population changes from back then. Before we begin, I'd like to have each commission member introduce themselves. I will also provide an overview for you of the goals, the laws we have to follow, and a few ideas to consider, mainly to be used for their testimony. Commissioners?
Bruce Chaplin.
Graham Lussey.
I'm Jason Valge.
I'm Alonzo Lusio.
Larry Novak.
Greek Tsang Tauri.
Brendan Malone.
Jackie Hassan.
I'm John John.
I'm John John.
I'm Charles.
I'm Abby Lee.
Thank you, thank you. Let's talk a little bit about the goal of the SDRC. Our goal is to go around the city and convene sooner hearings to listen to the public before we draft new district lines. More hearings will be held before we finalize a new plan to submit to the common council later this year. The new district line will be used next year for common council elections and for each year throughout this decade, 2030. Our work is guided by several federal, state, and city laws. Most importantly... Is the feedback bad for you guys? Is it bad? Most importantly... Most importantly is the need to create new districts that are equally populated, reflecting the one-person-one-vote doctrine. The districts cannot exceed an overall difference or deviation of 5% from the size of the smallest to the largest district. I want to repeat that because I'm sorry that I had to do that three times. Most importantly is the need to create new districts that are equally populated, reflecting the one-person-one-vote doctrine. The districts cannot exceed an overall difference or deviation of 5% from the size of the smallest to the largest district. Secondly, we have to ensure that minority voting rights are respected and that our plan does not deny equal opportunities to racial or language minority groups that can be properly created. These two requirements are required by federal and state laws. State law requires that districts are made up of contiguous territory. That means that you can travel from one side of the districts to another, or from one of the districts to another, and never leave the district. Districts must also be as compact as practical, so that our districts are not shaped in odd or misshapen ways. State law also requires that districts not be drawn to favor or disfavor incumbents, candidates, or political parties. We must also consider the cores of existing districts and communities of interest, so that like-minded neighborhoods are kept intact to the extent possible. Under a new state law, these criteria are ranked in priority order, so that we follow the rules in the order of population equality, minority voting rights, compactness, not favoring or disfavoring parties or candidates, maintaining district cores, and respecting communities of interest. We also have to follow additional city laws, and these laws require us to use existing election precinct boundaries, to follow geographically identifiable boundaries, and not use the residents of incumbent or potential candidates in developing a new plan. So we have a lot of work to do, and we need your help in doing this work. We have to hear from you. So please let us know how we should move forward with a new map. Let us know if your current district works for you, or whether changes should be made. And let us know your reasons, too. Should districts reflect where people go to school, where they shop, where they congregate, where there are common reasons why your community should be included in one district and not in another district? Each speaker for tonight will have three minutes to speak. Before we get started, though, I'd like members of the commission to please join in and have any opening remarks you may have. As they say in church, hearing none, we're gonna move forward, okay? All righty, so we're ready for our speakers. You have three minutes, and we strongly encourage you to move up to the mic at the front and to share your thoughts on what redistricting can mean for you or mean for your community. Thank you.
Hello, okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Rashida Caldwell. I'm a common councilor-at-large for the city of Syracuse, and I'm happy to be here today. I'm happy to see the commission here, and we're having this conversation because it's very important that the community is involved in the redistricting of our Syracuse community. It is so important that they know what's going on. So I'm really here to just listen, to hear what the community has to say and what the commission has to say, and thank you.
Thank you, common councilor. Appreciate you being here. Does anyone else have a comment? Would you like a comment?
May not like that view. My name is... Good afternoon, redistricting commission members. My name is John Meyer, and I'm here on behalf of myself and the Washington Square Task Corps. Hopefully during the time you were spent together bonding, you have formed a bond that is semi-perm, allowing the entrance of different thoughts. The Washington Square area has been divided in its reputation by both major parties. The county blesses us with five representatives, and the city cuts us like a knife in the heart down Court Street. Realigning, relegating a part of Washington Square to the Second District, which history shows represented by Tipperary Hill. It is the goal of the Washington Square Task Force to unite us with our neighbors across the street in the First Ward. The North Side is called a place of many nations, and Washington Square was the birthplace of the city of Syracuse. As different as the many groups on the North Side may be, we all share a common identity as North Siders. I ask you, members of the Redistrict Commission, to unite the balance of Washington Square with the First District. Thank you. That was a little rough, because you're right, that does throw you back on the feedback. What I would additionally like to say is this has been an historical divide made as a purpose political decision a long time ago, before probably any of us in this room were really involved in politics. So we'd like to correct that. It separates the minority communities, the new Americans coming in. We literally have more in common with my neighbors two doors down than I do all the way across to Tip Hill. I briefly jotted down five of the commission's requirements that this violates. I'll give you one. We can't walk to Tip Hill from Washington Square without walking in the road. So I don't know how you consider that contiguous community. We really don't identify with that area. Long time ago, Washington Square used to be a home to mansions, some of the richest people in Syracuse. That's changed. There's maybe three left. The rest are divided up into apartments. Many people moving from the South and West Side there, and they find themselves isolated. They find themselves not worthy. And by that I mean, I can't name a councilor who needs our vote. I had one tell me, if they didn't get a single vote from Washington Square, they would get enough from the other areas they represent. So they won't even come to a community meeting. That is the situation we're in. So we ask you, when you're looking at it, to consider taking this small piece and uniting us back with the rest of the North Side. And we have talked to one of the counselors about that, and she's willing and hopeful that it could be united. Because our goals with our neighbors are very much in line. And the city starts with neighborhoods. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Hello. My name's Dustin Zarni, and I'm the Democratic Elections Commissioner for Onadoga County, but more importantly, I live inside the city of Syracuse. I've been a resident and voter most of my adult life since 1997, although I lived in Onadoga County 45 of my soon-to-be 50 years. I'm so happy that this is going on. This is an important discussion, and I am so glad that a citizen-led, independent redistricting commission is moving forward in my hometown. I took deliberately of bringing some show and tell, because I think it's important to see where we are now in the city of Syracuse. Um, this thing does have a slight feedback, so sorry about that if I get a little distracted. But these are the five common council districts right now, and we have a very large imbalance in the First District. Thirty-three thousand residents are in the First District, and that is well over the median. In fact, the percentage difference between the First District and the least populous district, the Second District, is about 18% right now. Sure, I'm blocking the map. I am a better door than a window, so, uh, but, uh, so that's an 18% difference in the current population. Part of that problem is, is because these individual districts have not been redistricted since, uh, 2002. In the 2010 redistricting cycle, the common council failed to act, which the growing new American community in the North Side was starting to emerge back then, and it has since grown even more. And that is why we are seeing a large imbalance in population in the city of Syracuse. I am going to suggest a couple of changes. These by no means should be the final suggestions for this commission, but I was serving on the County Reapportionment Committee for the county legislature, and I was able to dive deeply into the city of Syracuse District. And all of this data that I'm going to share with you came from that role that I served, and I want to thank county planning for helping me bring these maps to you today, which I will give to the commission. And I also submitted a more in detail written report, so I won't take up too much of your time and make you all fall asleep with all kinds of assistance. But there are several ways that this commission can go. The first way I wanted to point out is what would be what's called a least change map. This would be the least amount of things that you could do to bring your population into compliance. In the least change map, you would take a few districts from the First Ward and move them into the Second District, which would take them out of the First District and bring the population levels more in compliance. That's Wards One, District Six, Seven, and I believe Eight. Would move from the First District, I'm sorry, from the First Common Council District to the Second Common Council District. And then you would take this small portion of 1904 and move it from the Fifth Common Council to the, to the, um, to the, uh, the Third Common Council District. That would bring it to within state compliance of the population. But I would like to, I'm sorry, I can't do this with one hand here, I'm sorry. I would like to suggest a quadrant type of concept, which would be an even more extensive look. This is only one concept, and you can go into this, I hope, in your, in your next meetings, but this would change the way we do the common councils. Instead of having the way we have now, we would unite the North Side with Tip Hill, and the North Side would be all in one district, and Tip Hill would all be one district. These areas have smaller populations, so they have to be merged together to be able to meet the requirements. But more importantly, Lincoln Hill, Eastwood, and, uh, um, and Cedric would be united in one district, and then the university areas of the Syracuse University in LeMoyne and the Bradford Hills areas of the city of Syracuse would be united, and then the southwest corner of Syracuse would be united. And then you could have the Central District or the inner-city district. This would also provide a black plurality district, which we do not have in the current maps. The current maps have no, they have several minority-majority districts, but no black plurality. And then I also offered a second concept, which is along the same lines, that just changes the way the South Campus District is done, which has a large amount of people in, in this district, I'm sorry, this district that is, uh, um, uh, a very transient district. It's the South Campus District where students only reside in their sophomore year, but it's several thousand people, and you have, it's very hard to figure out where to put it. These are just suggestions, things that I hope this commission will take into consideration, and more importantly, take into consideration the other suggestions that you're going to get from the public. So thank you very much. I won't take up any more of your time.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We just got some new people in, and I just wanted to know if any one of them had anything that they wanted to add about the picture. Thank you, Mr. Zarni. Anyone else? Are you good? Peter, are you good? Miss Morris, are you good? Nothing to add? Nothing to add at anyone else? I think this thing, they may think I know everybody. It's Wade. Okay, Pete.
Hi, my name's Peter McCarthy. I live on the east side. Can you hear me? No, this isn't on. Is that on? Can I just talk loud? I live on the east side. I'm really glad that this... Okay. I'm really glad that this process has happened. I want to give the common council a lot of credit for putting into place a nonpartisan, citizen-led redistrict process for a city, which, according to Dustin, is the first time in the eastern half of the country that this is happening. I think that's great, and thank the commissioners for your work. I'd like to ask, and my thought is maybe Dustin's input on this question, but if anybody else on the panel wants to address it, that'd be fine. How do you deal with the tension between trying to keep neighborhoods together, trying to balance the population, and also, as Dustin just alluded to, trying to make sure that racial and ethnic and class groups have some cohesion and have some representation when you set up the boundaries? I'm not sure if I worded that exactly right, but I think the question's kind of clear. Anybody want to take that, or do we give it to the expert?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, to me, that's a real important question, and I don't know the answer at all. Thank you.
Be sure that you have some ideas on if it remains the same in this process, or if it is to be moved. There are certain geographical areas you'd like to see maintained? Yes, mister? I'm going to give you this.
Okay, basically, I was wondering, based on the balance of population in Syracuse, do we have a larger percentage of minorities than our seats on the council? So it's a question, but I don't know if there's an answer.
Specific that deals with the geography? Are there a location that you would like to make sure is maintained? Or is there a location, like the gentleman here spoke about the First Ward, that they would like to make sure is changed or added into? You want to do? Oh, you're going to come up here? Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name, my name is Walter Island, and I live on the south side. I have lived on every side of this city except for the north side, all right? And to the gentleman that's here representing the north side, cool. All right? When it comes down to the 16th ward, the district over here by Upstate, going all the way down Salina Street, that is, in my opinion, excluding the north side, one of the largest districts that you have a minority of minorities that are voting. And if that area gets chopped up, then you have no area in Syracuse where we as minorities have control over putting someone in office that will represent us, that will represent the minority population that resides on the south side. Now that doesn't exclude what's going on on the north side, because it is growing. And what we do here now is going to affect what the future of Syracuse is going to be like. And when I say that, we all know about the redlining that occurred in the past. We all understand, or I hope we do, understand how that has affected generations and generations of how we engage with one another. The educational system, the public service system. I could tell you right now, where I live, I don't get the same service as Tip Hill get, all right? I think this is the opportunity in time to level the playing field so that everybody continues or will get equal representation. It is historical through this country. Other places have changed the way they have done things. Other cities have changed the way they do things, and right now, we need Syracuse to change the way. This should not be the one time and done. We should always be reviewing this. Thank you.
Appreciate you. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I'm going to just pause a minute until my gentleman friend back there can finish signing his name because I know he's going to have something to say. You want to come up around this one? You're never on the spot. Don't even start then. Thank you, Charles.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Good evening, everybody. My name is Charles Perezal, native Syracusean, born and raised here in 15th Ward, 719 Almond Street in 1946. So, I'm here to address the issue about the mapping. According to the, according to the, the 1964 Civil Rights Act, right? The mapping that's been taking place particularly under 16th is in violation of that, violation of that order. And I think we need to address that personally because the district is, the population is majority African-Americans. It's been that way for a long time. And to change it, non-divided up across, is just, is an injustice. And we all, you know, the thing that we all have in common, that we're all human beings. And we need to address those issues that affect one person, affect us all. So, we need to address those issues and make sure that we're very careful when you divide these districts up in ways of taking away power structure from a people that, particularly here in Syracuse, New York, is the most poverty-stricken city in the United States. And it was therefore designed with I-81 coming in. It divided, it divided a lot of families, took a lot of gentification, the redlining that took place. And that, in that particular area down there has the highest concentration of bronchitis and asthma in the United States. In that area, the population is mostly African-Americans. There's no such thing as a black race or a Negro or a white race. We're all human beings. There's one race, the human race. And what affects me affects you as well because I'm a human being and you're a human being. So, if you, if you, if you take away my rights and my civil rights and my human rights, you're doing the same thing to yourself and your children and for the future of this city. And Syracuse is a very popular, rich city in the United States. One of the most. We just have to come together and quit being divided. Because we are very divided and a lot of times, we don't get along together. And therefore, our children watches us. And we're not, we're not giving a good example to our children. Now, I'll give you a good example. I retired from Chrysler in 2002. In 1960, 1996 or 1997, 60 Minutes did an interview at Winchester Hotel in Connecticut. And on that, they had a prototype. That prototype was a, if I stole your gun, I couldn't use it because it was by your fingerprint. If your son or somebody stole your gun, they couldn't use it because it's your fingerprint. Even if I was a twin, couldn't use it because fingerprints are different. And what they, and what our Congress should do because they think, they think they are the government and we, the people, are the government. So, what they should do is the same thing that they did in the 20s and the 30s when the Tommy guns was out there with the so-called mafia. They gave those, they gave those, they gave those individuals, I think it was 10 years to turn in all those Tommy guns and they regulated. We should be doing the same thing and our congresspeople should be doing the same thing with these guns, these M-16s and all that's in the community to stop these gun violence. Because if you continue on and the violence still come, we're still going to lose a lot of children. And it's not right when we have laws on the books that can solve those problems. That's the solution. Because you give them, you give them 10 to 15 years to get all these, all these guns out of circulation, even if you're gun-owning because the Second Amendment says you have a right to own a gun. But Azukas are gone. You can't own a bazooka. It's regulated. So, all these weapons that are geared for military should not be in circulation and there should be, there is a reason to get them out of circulation. You give them 15 years to turn in all these guns? You swap them off with a fingerprint gun and you get rid of all illegal guns. People are manufacturing, making their own guns now, but they're illegal. So, if they're not fingerprinted, they're going to get some time if they get caught with them. That's the solution to that. But back to this mapping, particularly here in Syracuse, it shouldn't, it shouldn't be touched because the people in these districts want these things. We're elected, our officials, for these things to represent us. And we also have a president. We have assembly people to go along with what those districts represent. So, I'm not going to take too much of your time on those issues, but those are some of the solutions I think we all need to think about that and address those issues. And you know, especially a lot of retirees. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perezal. Appreciate it. I think he knows me well. Okay. Is there anyone else who would, you care to speak? Thank you, thank you for that. Please work with us. We're sorry about that. Yeah. We're trying to make sure that that gets better. Would the commissioners, I'd like to have any remarks or say anything at this time? Any commissioner?
You've highlighted our charge. It's to balance the different pros and cons of different arrangements. And it's a judgment and it's not one or the other. And it's not going to be easy. And so, your question reflects our dilemma and our charge. That's all.
Hi. I'd like to say that, I'm not sure about the other commissioners. I know this is the first meeting and I'm a little disappointed we had less people. And so, this is what I'm going to say. This process doesn't work without literal community input. We've got a Facebook page. We'll take information there. We're going to have four more meetings. Please tell your friends, log on, come to the meetings. We need as many different perspectives as possible. Make our job hard because what we're going to go on is some existing information that we have, like where kids go to school, things like that, and data. But we also need, we're going to have a ton of quantitative data. We need qualitative data. We need to know the different communities so we're not breaking folks up. And then later, people are going to complain. Voting is the most important thing that we can do to keep our democracy a democracy. And you can see in various places, people are gerrymandering things all out of control to keep control of what's going on. To stop that from happening, show up, submit information. Let us know what you want. Thank you.
You talked about your Facebook page, okay? That's all nice, but it wasn't that nice and it was tough to navigate. But also, you guys don't put out your email enough. Give us your email address. Let people comment. And the second thing is, you need more of these meetings in a smaller setting and you need to come out to some of the neighborhood groups. But if you want, then I'll email you. For instance, in our group, the Presbyterian Church did a study of the Washington Square area and the demographics there and what you're cutting in half, you know, what the city's currently cutting in half is absolutely amazing. It's not like everybody thinks it was 10 years ago. So, I appreciate, really appreciate the idea about keeping neighborhoods together. Thank you.
And we are attending those meetings and would love to be a part of any of those things that we can do as far as the smaller community meetings you have. So, if you have a group that you would like us to attend and be a part of and share whatever we're doing, please put that on Facebook. We read it, okay? So that we know the name and the location and the hours and we will make sure that one of the commissioners can attend. That's what we're, that's what we're here to do, to be, to hear your voices. I'd like to know if anyone on the screen, anyone on our Zoom would like to add anything? They can't hear us? If they can hear? Okay, but there's no one, so I'm not going to worry about it. Thank you so much, Molly. Okay. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? We're here until 5:00. And so, we really would like to hear anything you, oh, there you go, Peter. We want to hear anything you have to say. It's important. And now you have? Oh, you're just getting...
I want to thank Mr. Jackson for saying that the committee wants to hear from everybody. I don't know what to say other than that I want to see balanced, fair representation across the city. I live off in a southeast corner. My, I may change, I may not, but my neighborhood's not going to get split up. It's outside the city, another couple blocks. I don't know if it's possible for the committee to make public its options that it's considering, like Dustin did. I don't, I don't know what those mean. But if people have more to react to in terms of specific problems you're trying to solve or possible redistricting plans that you might have, that might give more citizens more to respond to, to be helpful to your work. Okay.
Appreciate it. So, the way this is going to work is like, like this. We're going to have five of these public hearings. One, I think one in each council district. And then, and only then, are we going to go try to draw some maps. And when we're done with that process, we're going to have a second round of public hearings. And that's the moment I think you're asking about. Is when we come back and we say, "It looks to us like we should move this line here and this neighborhood goes there." And this would make maps similar to what Dustin showed. And that's the moment where I hope that we'll get even more participation. People coming in and saying, "But wait, you broke up..." Or whatever it is, that we made some mistake or we didn't have some information and then we go back and do another iteration. So, that's sort of, that's built into the process.
And then, we're going to come back to the community again.
Since we have a little bit more time and not as many people speaking, I hope you don't mind me. I would like to expand on one of, some of the issues that I thought are problematic with the current map, a little bit more in depth, just to give the commission some things to think about. One of the things that I touched on, that I'd like to elaborate on, is that out of the five districts that we have, none of the districts in its current form is actually an African-American or black plurality district, which means it is the most populous district for the African-American community. Even the 4th Common Council District, which has been traditionally represented by African-American representative, is actually not plurality black. It's actually still plurality white in its current district. That's because of some of the changes to the communities that have happened over the last 20 years. You've seen a growth in the university area, which is part of that district, overwhelming the traditional neighborhood that is more downtown, south side parts of that district. That's something that I hope that this commission will look at and find a way to rectify. We are very lucky in the city of Syracuse that we have had incredible amounts of African-American participation in our elected representatives on the common council. Consular Caldwell is elected citywide. Helen Hudson, Collin Bay have been elected citywide. Even the 5th Common Council District was represented a long time by Bill Simmons. And the 3rd Common Council District is now represented by Consular Majak. You know, so we've had a wonderful ability to elect people of color. However, if you're looking at district councillors, they should be focused on neighborhoods of like-minded communities because we do have these councillor-at-larges in the city as well, which is focused on the city as a whole. So, I think having districts that are more neighborhood-focused and not as stretched out over different neighborhoods will be a benefit for the city. What those districts look like is what you are all going to decide. And maybe it is, the current districts that we have may be sufficient for that. And that's why I offered a least-change proposal that would make it very easy. But I also think you're going to get a lot more comments as this goes along. Being an East Sider myself, I live over by Lemoine, inside the city of Syracuse. I find it interesting that my district jumps a natural boundary with Erie Boulevard and goes into part of Eastwood, where I grew up, by the way. So, I've been all over the city too. Eastwood, East Side, lived a little bit in Strathmore, lived a little bit on Court Street and Oak Street. So, I've, I've been all over the place as well. I love this city. But my representation shouldn't be all over the place. In my district councillors, they're the ones who are fixing the potholes. They're the ones who are responding to neighborhood issues. They should represent neighborhoods of like-minded communities because I think what, sometimes what we see in some of these districts now is these poorer, more minority districts that are parts of other districts are ignored. Whereas other parts, like, like, oh, he left. Like John said about Washington Square and Tipp Hill, that maybe, you know, maybe that's, you know, one part of that district is being ignored because it's being cut up in the middle. Those are some of the things that I hope that this commission will address. I think you will. And I think there's many ways to address it. And I hope more input that will come from community members over the next few weeks as you do this will, will help you draw your draft maps. So, thank you.
Thank you. I don't really know how I want to word this because I want to be as polite as possible. But if you ask for my input, I expect to get an answer. With your hands being tied that we can't get answers, but you can take our information and make your decision, it really doesn't necessarily sit well with me because you may make your decision based off all the information and I may still feel like my question didn't get answered. I'm a part of other platforms where if we ask a question and y'all don't want to answer or the answers can't be given then, I signed in, I gave my email address. When those answers, not, I know the first round is getting all the information, second round, you're going to come back out. At some point, those questions should be tabulated, consolidated, put together and answered to the public so that we all know that our question got looked at and has been addressed to the best of your ability. Thank you.
I don't think your microphone, hello? I don't think your microphone... Anyway, so, my name's Peter King, I'm currently living in Meadowbrook area. What strikes me, first of all, is, is that so much of this has to do with some physical things, and even planning questions, which normally, we don't connect with political process, like districting. But I think that in the case of Syracuse, I think it's actually appropriate, because, well, we've all seen the 81 discussion, and where that's gone. And, and for this area, I would definitely recommend considering what will happen after the proposed 81 plan goes, goes into effect. I would look at what happens with access to different neighborhoods, because I think that defines neighborhoods. And one thing that strikes me, as somebody who did not grow up in Syracuse, but, but came here later on, is so many neighborhoods are divided by transportation issues and bottlenecks, by slim access. I don't know why it was designed that way, it's a peculiar facet, maybe of our history here, but it's just something you might want to be aware of. Who knows, you may find useful things to say to transportation planners. And I know this isn't a DOT meeting, but just, just making that pitch. Thank you, and certainly for this area.
We want to thank everybody for coming and attending, and also for your input and for your suggestions, or anything you may have to say, or any questions that you wanted to put forth. Know that this meeting was recorded, so that there definitely will be some responses, possibly along the line, as we gather and we move again to other areas, that we will get their questions and concerns as well. Our focus is to listen. Our focus is definitely to listen. And so we're doing that, and we hope that there's anything that you want to add, or anything you want to share about how you specifically feel, and you do not want to share it at this point in time, please go to the Facebook page, or please contact our, through our email, and put your concerns in. Say anything, say what you want us to hear, what you want us to know. It definitely would be great to get some more feedback on what it is that you care about for this district, for our districting plans. And I want to thank you for coming. Our commissioners, thank you for coming. There will be the next meeting, which will, oh, I don't have it in front of me. Thank you, appreciate that. The next one would be next Saturday, which would be March the 26th, at Fowler High School, and Fowler is located at 227 Magnolia Street, off of Gettys, off of South Gettys. Again, that will be at 7:00 PM. We hope that you can attend. We hope that you can bring your friends and your neighbors, bring your other organizations, bring individuals that you want to have a chance. You've been to this forum, you've been to this, you know how it works. We'll have better mics, we promise, okay? And we'll be able to do this, so that you can be heard, and, and we will listen. This is our job, as commissioners, to listen. So thank you again for coming. Have a great evening.